It'd be nice now. Six o'clock, guys, right on the money. Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council meeting for October 8, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Everybody is in attendance from staff. We've got Manager Sullivan, Administrative Director Misty Hatch, and everything else. Just kidding. Barbara Blythe, so, and sorry. So, thank you, sorry. We're gonna keep adding things to Barbara's plate. She's got good ideas. You gotta be careful with ideas around here. All right, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. It'll be led by Councilwoman DeFoya, followed by invocation by Dave Lee from the First Southern Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray for our council members and mayor as they meet to discuss important matters. Grant them the knowledge, wisdom, and understanding that they need so that they may be able to lead this town in accordance with your will. We come before you today with grateful hearts to thank you for the opportunity to serve our community to the very best of our ability, and for the responsibilities that you, oh God, have entrusted to us. We know that you are a God of peace and humbly ask that you preside over this meeting. May our efforts be fruitful and lead to a brighter future for our community. Lord, we ask that whatever discussion may be had today in this place be filled with integrity and transparency, and may we all, council members, mayor, and citizens, work together in unity, putting aside our differences for the greater good of our town. Lord, may you protect the mayor, council members, and lead them and guide them, and help them to be a true blessing in this town. We pray all these things in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, and in the name of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, item number four, consent agenda. This is for the September 24, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Just so you know, there is a correction for it on item number C under Resolution 25-27 under the motion. It should read, Councilmember DeFoya made a motion to approve entering an IGA with AZCART instead of, what was the opioid settlement. So that's the only correction that we saw at this point. Does anybody else have any concerns, edits? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Make motion to approve September 24, 2025 regular meeting minutes. With the correction.
Thank you. You have a second? I think Vice Mayor, oh, whatever, he'd be, but he's trying to defer. All right, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
Item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
There are none.
Thank you. Item seven, presentation by economic, in regard to economic development. So, we've invited David Mills. He's with SCI Real Estate out of Snowflake, but they serve the White Mountain area. We've done a little bit of consulting with you guys in the past, and we appreciate you coming and talking a little bit about the real estate side and how it relates to the city. So, we'll turn the time over to you.
All right, thank you Kathleen. Appreciate you letting us be here this evening. The, first of all, I just want to introduce myself. My name is David Mills. This is my son, Carsten Mills. We are the owners of SCI Real Estate. We actually have an office here in Holbrook, and Yvonne Larson is our agent here in Holbrook, so. So, whoever, who is getting married to, is it your daughter, or your sons getting married out there? Yeah, they're awesome people. Trent and Yvonne are great, so, good family there. So, I've been in the real estate business since 1999, and I've been involved in a lot of commercial development projects, industrial, commercial, and I've been a commercial real estate appraiser for many years. Mostly what I do now is, excuse me, sell real estate, and we also do some, help develop some real estate projects. And the, one of the most recent ones that we've done is with the city, or the Town of Taylor with Gus Lundberg. He's the town manager there. They had a piece of land that was a property that had been sitting there for years and years, and nothing was happening with this property. And the city actually, or Town of Taylor actually bought the property, and they developed this property into an industrial development for light industrial and small commercial. And we hired a company called Ironside Engineering, Zach Barlow, that did all the work there. And they basically plotted the development out and had a design for utilities and all that. And then the Town of Taylor hired us to develop this project, or to, sorry, to sell the project. And we basically sold 11 lots in, within a year, which was pretty amazing. I didn't think they would sell that quick, but there was a pretty big demand for light industrial and commercial development. And so, the people that are buying those are building office warehouse buildings on them. And so, it was a pretty high opening to see the demand for that. And there's not very many developers out there that are doing that kind of development right now. And so, the city, or Town of Taylor, sorry, I keep calling it city, City of Holbrook. I'll try not to call you guys a town, because, but. The Town of Taylor realized that that was a, you know, this vacant piece of land that was not doing anything. And so, it's quite amazing what has happened there. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Snowflake, or the Taylor area where K Supply is at, if you guys have been over there. Right next to the airport, there's a whole development that's gonna be starting. They're doing a bunch of groundwork right now. So, in 2024, September 2024, I can't believe it's been, it's been a year. You guys hired me to do a little analysis of a property you guys have here in Holbrook, and it's the property at 993 Hermosa Drive. And that's the one that has the, there's three different buildings and an apartment complex that are all just vacant right now.
Just to clarify, it's the old NPC campus.
Yeah. So, those buildings, we put together a little valuation of market price for you to kind of give you an idea what those are worth. What my, I'm here to just give you guys some information, and not necessarily to ask for any motions or anything like that tonight. And you guys can decide later on without me, and if you guys want to move forward with something like this. But our proposal is to, if you have a vacant building, a building like that's gonna continue to go deteriorate and depreciate over time. So, our proposal to you is that they either sell those buildings or have us lease those buildings. And I've worked with lots of economic development people over the years. And I know Chris might have been in here several times, and I know he's been with, you know, into Town of Taylor and Savior Sholo and some of the meetings I've been to. Those guys are great, and they can bring a lot of people, or they try to bring businesses into the town. But what happens a lot of times is those guys will attract a business, and they'll say, well, all right, well, let's go to Holbrook. And then they look around, and they're like, well, all we have is land, and we don't want to build anything. We just want to lease, or we want to buy something. And so, that basically, some of those deals fizzle out because there's not really anywhere for them to go. And so, sometimes the best economic development people that a city or town can have is a real estate broker, because we're motivated by leasing and selling property because we get paid commissions on doing so. Economic development people try, but they don't have any, like, financial incentive other than that's a regular job. And I'm not trying to bag on economic development people, but, because they do a good job, and they try really hard a lot of times, but sometimes it doesn't ever get anywhere. And that's, it's unfortunate, because in towns and cities need to grow a little bit. And we were talking, I was talking to, I can't remember your first name, Hatch.
Misty.
Misty, about how Stafford has grown so much. Some of us, it's hard to see our towns grow, because I grew up in Snowflake and Sholo, and seeing how much that's grown. And sometimes it's like, oh, I don't know if I want to grow that fast, but at the same time, towns need to grow, or else it gets stagnant. And it's not, it's not good for a town to just be stagnant all the time. And so, anyways, our proposal is to take this project, and if you would give us a little bit of leeways, and obviously work with the council to either sell some of those buildings to create some income, and then to maybe even hire an engineering company. There's an additional 19 acres right next to that. That's, along the front, there's a little bit of a drainage issue, but the rest of the property is very developable. And to maybe split that up into some lots that are available to sell, because we get, we get people looking for light industrial, and they're looking to build like an office warehouse building. They don't want to be on, you know, an Alvo Boulevard or Hopee, where they don't need the frontage and to build office warehouse buildings. And those are, those are some really good lots. And the City of Holbrook actually owns quite a bit of real estate. You guys own a lot of land. And there's a lot of development potential for those, some of those properties. Anyways, our proposal is to take that, and maybe if you're having a building that's just sitting there, to do something whether you're leasing it out, or to put on the market and sell and generate some income, that you could take that income and use it for engineering and maybe development of another, this other piece of land. That way, your buildings don't just continue to deteriorate. The incentive for us is that we, like I said, we like to sell real estate or lease it, and we charge commissions for that, obviously only if we sell it or lease something out. And so, that's my proposal to you guys. And I believe in, Holbrook is one of my favorite towns. I used to build here. I used to do a lot of remodeling here. And I have a lot of friends here in town. And I, 20-something years ago, I started working here, and I thought, this town really has a lot going for it. And there's such good people here that, one of the problems when I was a kid is that our biggest export in Snowflake was people. When you turned 19 or 20 years old and graduated, or 18, you would move out of town, and there wasn't very many opportunities for us back then. And so, a lot of us have moved back, and there's more opportunities now. But there, to create some opportunities and jobs for people to live in, and your community is important, I think. And you don't want your kids to have to move to the city to, you know, find a job. And so, anyways, that's where I'm at. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
So, the 19 acres, actually the NPC, is that between NPC and the freeway, or the marijuana growing facility? Where exactly is that 19 acres?
Right. I wish I had a map, but I'm sorry to bring any prompt, you know, stuff to it. But it's basically as you go over the bridge, and then when you turn right to go to the marijuana building over there, you keep driving, and it's just passed down the hill a little bit there. It's on the east side of those apartments.
Opposite emission.
Opposite emission.
Right. Yeah, so there's almost, 19.88 acres there that are vacant, and there is power there. And I'm assuming there's water. I'm not sure about sewer. I haven't checked into that very close, but I think there's sewer over that direction too.
I know the marijuana growing facility doesn't use the city sewer, so.
And it's possible that you could do, yeah, you could do big enough lots. If you did an acre plus, you could do, you know, a beach field with a septic system, so. But, anyway.
So, how would that be between, because you have the homeless shelter on one side, and then you have Change Point on the other side? Is that?
Yeah, it's kind of an unusual situation, because you're right, there is this random piece of land right in the middle of that, but it's possible that it might be, need to have a fence along there. But, or even make, if you develop into lots to sell to people, they might have to put their own fence up. And that would probably be an answer for an engineer to do a design, you know, a conceptual design for you. Something like that, so. But that's a really valid question.
There's a deterrent. I didn't know that.
Right.
So, we do appreciate you coming, and you've given us a lot of good food for thought. I think what we'll like to do is probably do a work session, because this council loves work sessions.
Yeah. Yeah, something to think about, and I would be glad to come back and bring some better maps and things like that. But we have a really good engineer that we work with, and we did this with the Town of Taylor, and it worked out really well. In fact, we're doing another phase of that because it did so good. And the, it was just quite a, I couldn't believe how many people wanted those lots.
Councilwoman Pacheco and I, about a month or so ago, we went and toured it with Chris Pasters a little bit. And we did see that additional second phase popping up with extra housing. And so, you're seeing, once you have a little growth, it creates some momentum and.
Right. We did the same thing in Sholo Industrial Park too, on several different developments in there. And we built a bunch of buildings over the last couple of years, and leased out buildings to FedEx and Red Bull. And we've got a national HVAC company. We've got a national electrical company that's gonna be moving in a new building soon. Those tenants and buyers of those properties, every single one of those buildings has about, you know, five to 10 people that work in those different businesses. And so, it would bring some jobs to the town or the city, and I think it would definitely help to increase some economic activity, so.
Now, we appreciate it, because this is our next step. Like you said, we've got to grow. Does anybody have any questions here? We will invite you back for a work session. Like you said, we can get some maps and get some ideas, and maybe get an official proposal.
Yeah, and we could even bring Zach with the engineering group too, and he could answer a lot of questions on like costs and things like that, of how much it would cost to do too. So, but I really appreciate you letting me come to the meeting tonight and meet all of you guys. And Kathleen, thank you, and I've known you for a while, and appreciate you letting us come.
We appreciate you, so. Thanks for coming. And Carsten, you're welcome back as well.
And maybe I'll say a few words next time. Thank you. We're gonna leave and let you guys do your thing, because I'm not really involved in any of the rest of your business. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you get out here, do you, either one of you have a card?
Um, I, in my truck, I can go, I'll let him give.
I was just seeing how important you were. I don't want to. I was just saying, if you had one, I'd like one.
Let's see if I have two now. I think I just have one.
So, we can, we'll send out your contact information.
Okay, I just have one. Next time I come, I'll bring one.
All right.
We'll have, we'll have Lisa send out his contact information.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Have a safe drive home. All right, item number eight, new business. This is ordinance 25-08. It's a first reading in regards to amending the city tax code to increase the transaction privilege tax rate on the selected tax classification below. So, let me read just the background and discussion. Says, "The city currently has a tax rate of 3% with an additional rate of 2% on lodging. Many cities around the area, specifically tourism-based cities, have increased their lodging taxes to 5% and their hotel rates to 5% to generate more income for capital projects. This would be a great way to fund a new swimming pool and road projects. Financial implications: Increased revenues estimated to be about $646,000, and that's annual. This amount could help the city secure funding for a new swimming pool and road improvements." And so, I'll go ahead and read, well, we don't have ordinance setting for now. I want to turn just a little bit of time over to Manager Sullivan to give us some more clarification on it.
Yeah, so, we have been in talk with Mark Reader and the League of Arizona Cities and Towns on our transient lodging tax. And a lot of communities have gone to this model, and we're like one of the last ones that are doing this. So, what they have found is, and this is just the tax rate on just transient lodging. So, anytime a tourist comes through, they get a hotel room, they get charged 3% and an additional 2% on that tax rate. This would then increase to 5.5. What they're finding out is, is you are able to use that additional revenues to do major projects like community development downtown. Or if we increase that 2% to an extra 1% on that transient lodging, we could then take that funding and utilize that to go get bonds for the new pool, or new roads, or cleaning up downtown on Hopee. So, Williams, Kingman, a lot of those cities that are based, heavily based on tourism, much like Holbrook, because we're so close to National Park, have gone to this model. And that's how they've been able to revitalize their downtown areas. So, using that recommendation and thought process from those other communities, I've reached out to the league. This is what they suggest and what other communities have done. And I think it might help us be able to utilize that money to really revitalize Hopee and do some other projects.
So, I appreciate the research that's been done on this. Holbrook, we are different than a lot of these other cities that don't have the big retail giants for our tax base and things like that. So, we've got to be creative in a tax space. That's the only way we're gonna actually grow and be able to get the right staffing and resources, so.
And this is one of the easiest ways too, because this isn't really hurting the locals. All the hotels and wigwams, those kind of things, they're just passing that rate on to the transient, or the transient lodgers, all the tourists coming through town. So, unless we're locally buying a room, then it's gonna hurt us. But in reality, it's a way to spread and collect revenues from our tourist base.
And the implication would be minor. If you're thinking a hotel is about $150, what is 2%, 5% on that? I don't know that people even really feel that tourists will even really feel the impact. Does this also apply to, like, the OKRV park? Or only hotels?
So, it depends. So, when you collect in the Department of Revenue, the definition for transient lodging is less than 10 days, I believe. So, anything less than 10.
30 days.
Oh, it's less than 30 days.
30 consecutive days.
Yeah, so anything less than 30 consecutive is considered transient. So, that's where you go.
So, hotels that are downtown, that were hotels, but now they're weekly, monthly rentals, those types of things?
If they're month to month, then no, because it's over, as soon as they hit that over 30, they're not. And that just recently passed this last.
As of January, it was eliminated, the TPT tax.
Yeah.
What about Airbnb's?
Now what?
Airbnb's?
Airbnb's are included in that, yes.
If they're renting less than 30 consecutive days.
Well, unless it's, as long as it's less than 30 consecutive days, yeah.
Most people don't stay in at Airbnb's the 30 days.
Yeah. So, most of them are considered that short term.
How?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
How are you gonna regulate Airbnb's?
The Department of Revenue does that, as well as if we start getting our business license involved, then we can have them on our directory, and then we can then audit them. Until we get that base, we can't really audit them. It's all hearsay. And so, that's why we've gone with Algerd's Consulting on that, because confidentiality for anything taxed is extremely strict. So, we can really only identify customers that should be paying taxes, and then between the Department of Revenue and our auditors, we can audit them. But as far as confidentiality laws of knowing exactly who's paying what and for what reasons, those are really strict. So, the way we're getting around that is working with the Department of Revenue and hiring a tax consultant that can really dig into those items.
Right. I totally do not like this. I don't think we need to go this route. We have, some members of our council have expressed their spending habits. If they find out somebody is charging them to use their credit card, they won't go do business there. We're, we want tourism. I don't think we're giving people enough credit for using their brains. So, we're saying, no, we can throw this out there, and they will never, ever realize what hit. We want our tourism to grow. It's like Flagstaff now. Their taxes and everything else are higher than a kite. Their wages are higher than a kite. It's starting to affect them. And I, granted, this is easy money. I mean, let's go pass taxes. People pay for it. Let's go pass them. This is not the way we need to build up our tourism base. I'm totally, totally against this.
I would be interested in Mrs. Pax's recommendation.
Well, I don't like the idea of being taxed as a business anymore. I mean, the whole thing, we have now-ho permits that we have to do, county permits, and now you want, we want cities, so we can get a double whammy for permits. It's just another way of getting more money in the coffers to pay for, I don't know what. As far as increasing lodgers' tax, I would be okay with that if it went towards a pool, and if a pool is promised. That's the only reason I would do it.
If the pool was?
If it was done for a pool.
Right, and so it's set in the, whatever we rolled up.
Yeah, I mean, that's, because I'm here, my kids are here, I would use it. Everybody in the community would use it.
So, if I ran a teepee, let's say it's $100, the lodger's tax would go from $3 to $5. Would that affect your business, or would it adversely?
Rising taxes affects any business. How is that not good for the business?
Does that deter your customers?
No, well, I still have customers coming in. Yeah, I will. I will still have customers coming in, but I try and not have my, the rooms skyrocket high. You know, I like letting anyone be able to stay and not outrageously price on something that's unique and different, right? I don't like raising my prices. Minimum wage is going up. Everyone's feeling the crunch, and it's just more and more. But I would be okay with this if it's for a pool.
But there's no guarantee, though. Once we pass this, they can do whatever they want.
We can guarantee it, and we can.
You can. If it, when you do it, it's like, if we're going to raise it, that first project with those, that additional funds would be towards this, before it goes to roads.
Yes. Because we do need a pool. We need an all-year-round pool, I think.
I think we need a lot of things. We need sidewalks, and we need roads. You know, we all have our priorities. And the big thing for me is that Holbrook needs revenue. That, to me, it, 2% increase in taxes to tourists is not gonna deter them from staying. And so, I think it's worth the risk, especially when we're the, one of the only towns that are not taking advantage of this, and everybody else is doing it. It's like, if we're not moving forward, we're moving backwards.
Well, we don't know that for a fact.
Well, we keep saying, hey, why, we keep comparing ourselves to all the neighboring towns, saying, why are they allowed to, why are they doing this and project this project? Because they've got more tax money than we do. And if we keep saying, well, we're not gonna do anything, we're not gonna grow, we're not doing, and so, we're gonna be stagnant, and we're not, unlike what David Mills said, a city is not ever stagnant. You're either growing or dying, and that's the truth of it. Sorry, go ahead.
So, let's say if we raise this, and a tourist comes in and is deterred by that 2% increase on the lodger's tax. Who's to say that Winslow doesn't already have that percent, that 2% in there? So, now they're like, oh, I don't want to see Hamon, I'm gonna stay in Winslow. So, now they're gonna send their money to Winslow, when we could have used it here.
That's what I'm saying.
And tourism is only gonna increase here in Holbrook. It's only gonna increase, because we have the national forest, and we're just, and we have a lot of attractions. We have Route 66. I think we have more attractions than Winslow. Winslow, yes, they're bigger. But Holbrook has the national forest. And I've been getting, there at the Wigwams, I've been getting these big tour groups that are coming in and wanting tours. So, if anything, we're gonna have more and more tourism. So if anything, we're gonna have more and more tourism. And they're not gonna, I don't like increasing taxes, but it's not gonna decrease tourism flow. Tourism flow is going to increase. The older something is, the more attractive it is. National forest, petrified forests is used to getting older.
Have we not been saying that for years though?
Saying what?
That the tourism is increasing. How how do we know, has it increased?
It has for my business, the flow of um tourism, yeah.
City Council on the table?
I'd just say I'd rather that money be here than to go to another town. That ten percent, I'd rather it stay where we can utilize it.
Right, and I really don't think it'll hurt tourists. Are they gonna know when they come into the motel that before we raised it, it was three percent and now it's five percent? They're not gonna have any idea when they pay for the room.
I mean, have you ever?
That we increased, I never paid attention, they just pay whatever they tell me it is.
Well, why don't we make it more then? Let's just go ten percent, they'll never know.
This is not, this is not.
They're not gonna notice.
The tourists are not gonna notice that.
They're gonna pay it regardless.
I remember going to Vegas a while back, thinking, holy, come on, it was so much.
But you still went, right?
Never again.
But the point is, he's probably just not going back to Vegas again. Are you still gonna go stay in a motel somewhere?
No doubt I would.
And that's the point. It's coming, everybody's doing it. If we wanna progress, then we've gotta make changes and that's what it comes down to. We've gotta make the hard decisions and guess what? Then we can offer more services, which will increase more people. People don't mind paying a little more if you get a little more for it. And we're gonna be talking about that in a little bit, too.
Tourists aren't gonna come to Holbrook to enjoy our roads.
No.
They're going to come to Holbrook for the things that we have. They're not gonna say, oh, I wanna go to Holbrook, because their roads don't have sidewalks. Yeah, they're not gonna worry about that. They're gonna come because what's gonna bring them here. And then we're gonna utilize that money to fix our roads that are gonna benefit us who have to drive on those roads daily.
So Kathleen, I would like to see a priority of where lodger taxes sent is placed first.
And this will be separated into our lodger's tax, how it currently is. So we'll be able to uh track that and prioritize how we use those funds.
And that's what, the city council is in charge of our own budget. So it is our decision as a budget.
Do whatever you want here, three percent, but that two percent that we increased it to is gonna be used separately for something else.
And we can, we can earmark it for that. As like I said, this much for the pool and then whatever in our next priority. Like you said, there's multiple priorities. And so if we get a bond that says, hey, our bond says we can do this much and this is how much that interest rate's gonna be or our payment's gonna be, we might be able to get two projects out of that same bond. And so, so we'll work that all through. So tonight, this is just the first reading. So we'll have another two weeks to be able to talk to administration about any questions and concerns. And so.
And there'll be a public hearing.
And there'll be a public hearing, yes, thank you. So that'll be in two weeks.
The public hearing is in two weeks, right?
Yes, correct, so. So like I said, it's first reading. So let me for now go ahead and just read the um ordinance. So we've got an ordinance and a resolution, correct?
No.
But all right, so we're not voting on the resolution tonight, just the.
We're not voting on the ordinance, but we are the resolution.
We are voting on the resolution.
No, we didn't.
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry.
We'll wait on that, it won't matter till we pass the ordinance. All right, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero eight. An ordinance of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, amending the city tax code to increase the transaction privilege tax rate on the selected tax classifications below, providing for severability and designating an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-six. Be it ordained by the mayor and council of the City of Holbrook, Arizona as follows. Section one, increasing TPT rate for hotel classification. The tax rate provided in the following section of the city tax code is hereby increased from three percent to five percent. Section two dash three dash four 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 hotels. Section two, increasing TPT rate for the additional tax upon transient lodging. The tax rate provided in the following section of the city tax code is hereby increased from two percent to five percent. Section two dash three dash four four seven, rental leasing and licensing for use of real property, additional tax upon transit lodging. Section three, severability. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance or any part of these amendments to the city tax code adopted herein by reference is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section four, effective date, provisions of this ordinance shall be effective on and after January first, twenty twenty-six. So that's our first reading. Again, I'd like to encourage any council member, if you have questions, concerns, take the administration now so they can research it, uh answer any questions you have there. So we're prepared for additional comments in two weeks.
I just have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
You said that it was blocked at five? What what did you mean by that? By by law, it's blocked or it would never go more than that?
Yeah, yeah, this is, the max is five and five.
Okay, this is the max by law, and so we, okay, that's it, thank you.
No, I appreciate that, that's great, yeah. All right, thank you. All right, item number B, resolution twenty-five dash thirty, amending the fees for the City of Holbrook Golf Course. No, not for for free reading, yeah, okay. Nope, you're good, good question. All right, background and discussion. The city increased rates on July thirtieth for the golf course. After several months of the newly implemented fees, staff has recognized that the increase for family monthly and family yearly fees increased substantially and is unreasonable for customers. Staff have also recognized that the fee for disc golf is not reasonable in surrounding areas. Staff are recommending decreasing these rates. Family monthly from one hundred and ten dollars a month to eighty dollars a month. Family yearly from one thousand one hundred a year to eight hundred a year. And disc golf from ten dollars per eighteen dollars to free. And um I know um the city's gotten phone calls and things like that. I've gotten quite a few messages and calls as well. I know a couple of the council members probably have as well. Um I wanna speak first of the disc golf. Um I do believe in the future, we should be charging something as they are utilizing um the golf course and there's gonna be maintenance on it. However, they're still, it's not necessarily the best functioning disc golf course. At this point, they're still developing it and there needs to be some changes on the the tees and things like that, so they're not conflicting with golfers. Um so I am in support of this. Um did somebody have a comment on this either? Anybody have any concerns, questions?
So did Steve prepare this?
Who's staff?
Yeah, yeah, I I worked with Steve and then we also spoke with the men's association. And there was uh several golfers too that that expressed.
So the amount that we're, they wanna change it to, like the eighty dollars a month for family monthly? Is that more than what they were paying before?
Yes, it's still more, it's just.
More than what it was before, so we still are making more money. And I do agree with get disc golf. I think if they're gonna be out there playing disc golf on our golf course, that they should pay some minimal fee to do that.
Well, well, right now, there's safety issues out there.
One second, sorry, one second.
What is the surrounding, what is the fees for the surrounding areas that we were comparing it to?
Are you speaking of the golf course or disc golf? I know like the county's free.
Well, yeah.
And so.
County free, you know, all the courses in Sholo are free.
Is it on their actual golf course?
No, it's not on their golf course, they have, they have it through their parks and those kind of.
Theirs is.
That's the problem, yeah.
That's where my concern is that they are utilizing the golf course for it, which also opens it up for them to utilize golf carts and.
Right now, they're not allowed to, doesn't mean it doesn't happen, so.
But would there be any conflict with them, someone getting hit by a?
Well, and that's my point. I know, um speaking to a couple of golfers and things like that, the way their initial disc golf was set up, like one, they had a basket right over a green. Bad idea, so they need to move that and change it. You don't want those um, the disc hitting a green.
Is there, that maybe we could relocate the disc golf, disc golf course?
And um, so I know there's a, a disc golfer that reached out to me and he's done it on the amateur level and he might even done on the professional level. He reached out to me with some big concerns and he said he'd be happy to come in and help redesign some of those issues, but we need to have the golfers involved too, where they're not, like you said, so they're not hitting them, right?
Yeah.
There's enough space out there, we can move the disc golfers. So I think for now, I'm good moving it to free until we get that course settled and then I say, let's come back and maybe do something like five dollars fee, you know, to go out there, because it is on our golf course and there's gonna be maintenance with it. Sorry, did you?
Yeah, and it's just, I just feel like it's gonna clog up when you're golfing, because initially it's a golf course and that the disc golf course should probably have been relocated to a different area, but it's gonna interfere with the golfers in the first place. And you're just gonna have more people out there on the course itself.
But they've been doing it this way for quite a while.
Yeah, and that's why I feel.
And they've been doing it for free.
Do we have a lot of disc golfers out there?
More than I thought, because they started calling me.
I know Adam, I know Adam, uh he used to be on the council, he's a disc golfer. Marsh, Adam Marsh.
Like, I feel if it's gonna be on the golf course, there should be a fee for it. Now, if it was relocated to a different area that wasn't utilizing the golf course itself, then it would be, then being free would make more sense.
We used to have it at Harwood.
Yeah, that was a bad spot. The kids were getting hit in the cars at Hunt Park.
Yeah, because if it's not fee maintained.
I remember when it was there.
Sorry.
Yeah, because it's not being maintained, then we don't have to worry about that fee. But if it's gonna be on the golf course, the golf course does require maintenance and I just feel like if it's going to be on the golf course, there should be some type of fee. If it's not on the golf course, then let it be free, because it's not you main, having to be maintained.
Oh, thank you. Did you guys, oh, go ahead.
So when they called, were they complaining because there's a fee at all or just that it was increased to ten dollars?
They were complaining about the fee, because they were saying they could go somewhere else for free, so.
I've heard that quite a bit.
For disc golf?
Yes.
I guess they could pay for gas.
If they go somewhere else to play.
It's gonna cost them more than five dollars.
If they go somewhere else to play, are they still gonna be able to play on a maintained golf course?
Well, like in the county, you're just playing in the desert, right?
Yeah.
Kind of on the trail system.
I mean, because if they're going somewhere else, are they gonna be playing on the grass? On a maintained?
So it's on the, it's not on the course itself, it's on the borders, as far as my understanding?
No, I've seen some, I've seen the baskets, like under the trees and like on the course.
Right on, are they right on the course?
They're all kind of on the outside of the fairways.
I've heard golfers say that they've had to wait for a disc golfer.
So a lot of the golfing is is east-west. When they designed that course, they tried to move it across the fairways, so there are a lot. A lot of the baskets are north-south.
But it isn't abnormal for golfers to have to wait for other golfers to, you know? So a little patience, I don't think is like, to get rid of a sport that people would enjoy.
No, I'm not saying get rid of it, I think.
But I understand, like relocating it, especially if there's a safety risk, get at a minimum if you're signing up for a membership, we should have some type of waiver.
Just have them where health.
But eliminate liability in the city, you know, you use golf courses at your own. Risk it, you'd have to look at.
Yeah, but if you got hit in the neck with a ball, it probably hurts us.
I'm sure.
Other golfer, other golfers can be hit by a golf ball, too.
That's true. So let's break this down a little bit. Is there any concerns that anybody wants to talk about, about the golf fees for the monthly and the yearly to start with?
Well, I think it's good.
It's fine.
You're you're trying to find a demographic. You're looking for families and they can't afford a hundred and ten bucks, going down to eighty. You're gonna make more money in the long run, because you're gonna sell more. The Walmart method of free enterprise.
All right, so then for the disc golf, um how, my proposal is, let's save it for free, but let's, you know, SAP, get together with the disc golfers and the men's association and redesign that course. Get a course that's functional for both, because we do wanna be able to provide that service. Not everybody's a golfer, and we do have quite a few citizens that do like to disc golf. So I don't wanna take away a service that we have. We don't want people moving out. I had sad news this past week about another young retirees that's moving out of town. It just makes me sad. Um but that's the thing, it's like, what do we, we gotta still have things here for their families come back to and they wanna retire here and.
Yeah, I don't think they're moving away, because the golf courses.
No.
We raised disc golf.
No, but but I don't wanna get rid of a service or an activity.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know.
Because they don't have a.
Water aerobics.
They left from the water aerobics, so, okay. All right, and how do, that's my proposal. Does anybody else have another suggestion or proposal they wanna send?
Nope.
I I would, I would say maybe instead of ten dollars, do it like six dollars or five, just so it's something's there, so that you're at least getting something, so that just to go towards those maintenance fees, I mean, it's not like the golf courses make it enough to cover themselves, so if you're giving something for free to utilize that and then if it gets relocated, then you won't have that fee at all. Let's just do it for free.
So the reason why we have a golf course there is because our sewage had to go somewhere, right? Couldn't go back into the river, by law, it had to go on up up the field, which is there, and a golf course. And so from the beginning, the golf course wasn't meant to make money. It was meant for a place to use our sewage. So, I mean, if you look at it that, I don't think you have a nickel and dime, folks, for playing disc golf.
I agree.
I like it the way it's written.
All right, so we got three proposals now. Or what do you mean, like it's written free?
Just just written right here.
All right, so at this point, are we to a good spot where we can take it to a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I'll open the floor for a motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion, so.
Wait, can you read it by heading first or?
Oh.
Yes.
I can, thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty, resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Holbrook, City of Navajo County, Arizona, amending the fees for the City of Holbrook Golf Course. Whereas the City of Holbrook provides golf services for customers and charges fees to operate and maintain said golf course services. And whereas a portion of the expenses of operating said golf course services need to be offset by the fees collected. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that it's in the best interest of the citizen to amend the fees for said golf course services. Um section one, I'll just read the ones that are relevant tonight. Um BK, the fee for a family year greens is eight hundred dollars. L, the fee to play disc golf is free. And then, sorry, the other one was H, thank you. The fee for family monthly green fee is eighty dollars. And so make a motion to approve it as written.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
That was you, right?
And so, hearing none, we'll go, do we need a roll call vote for resolution?
Yes. Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pat?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, item C, request for the purchase of a motor grader. So the city is, has a need to purchase a motor grader. Staff reached out to John Deere and Kat to see if there was a used model that we could purchase at a reasonable price. John Deere came in at over forty thousand, while Kat has one for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Staff recommended purchasing the Kat motor grader. This was budgeted for in her funds, as her current grader was purchased in nineteen ninety-eight and is worn out. Empire Kat is part of the state purchasing cooperative. So financial implications, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted out of her funds. Manager Sullivan, do you wanna let us know what a motor grader is?
Yeah, so it's it's our blade. So that's the the piece of equipment that we need to use to uh re relay these uh milling roads or the zipper roads that we bought. It helps us um maintain the levee and and those kind of things. So uh any kind of grade work, any type of um road work that we we do to to level the roads out, it requires a blade. This would include trading in our old one in with the price, so we have that.
So and this looks like it's a two thousand seventeen versus the. Isn't it one of twenty-one or something here, so.
Well, I have a question.
Ours is so worn out, it dies the second you put um diesel to it. So it's hard, it it's not pushing any piles like it needs to.
Councilman Black and then Councilwoman Chafoya.
Well, my question on this is, it says it was budgeted. And all of our budgets on there, somehow it doesn't get broke out. I've never seen anything that says we're gonna buy a motor grader.
Yeah, it's.
So it wasn't budgeted?
Yeah, it was budgeted.
Well.
Hold on, he's gonna.
In her funds, so I hold it, I would've called it a blade. But when we did our work sessions, we did include a blade, a dump truck, a blade, a roller and a water truck.
So this is the blade?
So this is the blade.
Okay.
Randy, could I ask a question? Um it's a little off topic, but kind of the same topic. So the um the test road that we did for the zipper um by the auto parts, So, the, um, the test road that we did for the zipper, um, by the, uh, auto parts, is that like, how, is there any other thing that you would do to that road?
Yeah, so right now, so the, the second piece of that is to come over the top of that with a fog sill.
Actually, we'll have you do that in your summary, is that okay? Sorry, because that'll do a little more so, before, um, clerk.
That's fine, all right.
That's correct. I know she was eyeing me, so, anyways, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Tefoya, did you have a question?
So, this motor grader, could it be used then to, you know, like that road that goes from, like the Mormon church, that dirt world that goes across the back?
That is not our road, but, but we have used, no, it's not.
It's not the same road? Really?
It's that, uh, the Hewards own it, and the Williams own that road, that is not a city road.
You mean, we can't take it?
Well, we can, I mean, we've done that in the past.
So, we could use that motor grader to, you can do that road, so it's.
Well, it's been a city that's graded for the last thirty.
There's actually a sewer system up there, yeah, sidewalks.
It's never been dedicated, it's never been.
Never been dedicated, there is an argument, like said, for, um, when you've, uh, used it for so long and they've known about it, but we won't get into that yet, so.
It's been fifty years.
You did say we can, but, because I've seen them.
Yeah, so, but back to the equipment, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the equipment here?
Well, cats don't come in green and John Deere's do.
We can paint it.
And we don't want it green.
All right, how about we open the floor for a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the, uh, purchase of this motor grader, that for a hundred and fifty-five thousand with the trade-in of the current.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right. All right, summary of current events, uh, couple of things, um, so, just kind of a fun little tidbit, uh, Mojo Marketing helped us create our logo. And it's actually been nominated for a Golden Prospector Award, and so, um, the awards will be, um, October twenty-third, if anybody wants to go represent the city, uh, Mojo will be able to go, but.
Where, where is that gonna be?
It'll be in Prescott, so, if you're interested, let me know.
Our logo.
Our logo.
I think we should send Robert.
I'd like to know who proposed that, but I'd like to know, it had to be Mojo that nominated that.
Anyways, so, I think it's pretty cool, I don't know who went or not, but it has been nominated, so that's pretty cool for Holbrook, so.
Hey, I'll go.
All right, yes, thank you, so, all right, um, Mark Romo is putting together a toy drive, he's working with the city of Winslow, and like work with Holbrook as well, and Joseph City, to do a little Colorado Coalition Toy Drive. And so, um, we'll be seeing some volunteers around town helping to collect either, uh, toys or cash, if you don't have time to go shopping, they'll accept cash too. Uh, for Christmas, yes, and if you're an organization, um, he said their biggest need is gonna be identifying, um, families that can use it, so if you can reach out to myself, or to Mark, if you know of families.
Is this like the Angel Tree?
Kinda like the Angel Tree, but it won't, yeah, but it's a, just kind of a coalition of these three towns getting together to do it, so.
And then school's a good person to reach out to as well.
Yeah, we said the schools.
The food bank.
Oh, okay, so, great, we will get with you guys on that, so, um, our prayers are with our friends down at Globe, um, like I mentioned earlier, uh, Councilwoman Pacheco and I were able to go down about a month ago. Um, and we talked with their manager, and, uh, their mayor, and their, um, assistant city manager, they treated us really well, kinda showed us some of the really fun things they were doing down in Globe, and their main street, things like that, and unfortunately, a couple of weeks back, they had some, you know, extreme flooding and tragically, you know, they've lost a few lives. And they're gearing up for more flooding, um.
Yeah, this week.
This week, so, uh, we'll probably reach out to them and see if there's something we can do to assist, and what kinda things, and so, we'll bring that back and see if there's a way that Holbrook can, I mean, they were very gracious to us, and good people down there, so, um, also, um. Just to let everybody know, Buddy Dupay passed away, um, and, um, and it's hard to talk, when, you know, we have a lot of people that passed away, and it's hard to talk about everybody, but Buddy was actually on our, currently on our planning and zoning commission. And so, we wanna thank him for his years of service, he was on there for many years, I'm not even sure how long it should've looked, but, um, he will be missed, so, um, and with that, I am done. Vice Mayor Nielsen?
We have a lot going on at the food bank and the senior center right now, uh, we're gonna have a bongo on November fifth, and it's time for Terry to win.
Don't jinx me.
So, so anyway, uh, the, food prices have gone up a lot, what used to cost us about eighty-five hundred dollars to give food boxes away is now fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for about exactly the same as what we used to buy. And so, um, we've put in for some grants, we're gonna have this bongo, and so please come and support us. Now, if you notice anybody in need, there are applications at the food bank, noon to, Monday through Friday, and we, we accept all applications, up to a hundred and thirty applications is what we were thinking we're gonna accept this year. So, it's a hundred and five dollars, it'll be a ham, and it'll be a sack of potatoes and oranges and screaming casserole stuff, and all the stuff for, for two or three days around Christmas. So, that's what I wanted to share.
What is the bongo? November fifth at what time?
Six PM at the senior center.
I thought I read it was the eighth, but it is.
It is the eighth, why, why did I say the fifth?
I would've showed up on the fifth.
No, I'm sorry, it's Saturday the eighth, I'm.
No, thank you.
I was thinking about Sunday night.
And apps are taken Monday through Friday, what time, did you say eight to?
Twelve to two.
Noon, noon to two, and, and we'll take apps for two months, and that way we'll have, we wanna make sure that we don't, that we spend the right amount of money, since we're, since it's such a big spend this year.
Are you looking for, for donations or funding, because I might have a resource for you?
Well, for both, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, anybody in the public too, if you have resources, please reach out to Vice Mayor Nielsen, thank you.
And can I ask him a question? The food boxes that people can go down there and get, are you handing those out to the employees that are, like, federal employees that are working?
Very good, we just sent something out, uh, Francie Payne just sent something out from our committee, if you're a federal employee, if you're working like at the, uh, at the park, and right now you're laid off, yes, please come and get a food box from us. Absolutely, we're not sending anybody away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman Black?
Uh, just two things, another one still, I've had a lot, well, quite a few people still tell me about the water trucks out on the Claus Road. That's gotta be anywhere from seventy thousand to a hundred thousand gallons a day. And their complaint is, look what's happened down south now with all the pecan trees growing down there, their wells are running dry, now they're starting to scramble, because people that have been in business down there forever, are now going out of business because they have no water. So, we put in that new water thing that's been going on for what, over a year now, it's still not in service, we're still not monitoring the water that's going out of these water trucks. So, I don't know where we are, I don't know what we're gonna do, it's still an honor system, which does exactly work real well. But I don't know how many times we're gonna have to keep bringing this up before something happens on that, but, the other thing I'd like to see is we keep comparing ourselves to other cities or towns or whatever. You go out there, and you go through, Snowflakes done it now, Shallows had it forever, the great big huge American flags. We have nothing, I mean, you've got the Route sixty-sixteen coming up at the start of next year, it would be really nice to be able to put a great big huge American flag somewhere in this town.
Like Gillespie Park, maybe.
Exactly, where people can see it, I mean, it, it would be nice for people to think that we are patriotic, that we do care, but, other than that, that's all I got.
Good idea, sounds like a good ego project for some boy.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um, with Halloween approaching, I do know that the Navajo County Sheriff's Office is going to be doing a trunk or treat on, um, October twenty-ninth. Um, it will be around the time that the sun sets at Gillespie Park, uh, they do it every year, first responders usually, um, set up a, a trunk there with goodies, so people can bring their kids to go visit and, um, get treats there. And then, the very next day, uh, on the thirtieth, the Holbrook High School is doing a trunk, their trunk or treat as well. And so, um, our, our victim services department will probably participate in both, and, um, I also didn't know if the city, I know that, uh, Holbrook High School, I had talked to, um, Kayla Serna, who is, uh, over the student council, who's kinda overseeing that project, and she is looking for people to actually be there with a, with their car decorated to hand out candy. So, I also thought it could be good outreach for the city, and maybe for the council, if anyone was interested, so.
And this year, it's actually at the fairgrounds and not the high school parking lot where it's been every other year?
It is, it, oh, I, I haven't clarified, thank you for that.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be down at the fair, I don't know where at the fairgrounds, but I can read that it's gonna be at the fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and anything about October? Okay, no, that was it, okay, all right, Councilwoman Tefoya?
I just wanna, if you didn't attend the domestic violence awareness, kinda like vigil, um, it was a great event, and it brought out a lot of awareness, and stuff regarding domestic violence, not only in our city, but the surrounding cities, and what they do for these domestic violence. So, if you missed it, I'm sorry, because it was, it was really good, they really, really did do a good job. Also, I was out of town when they did the train dedication, and, um, but I heard that it was really, really nice, and, um, I just wanna say thank you to everyone that was involved in making that whole process happen, and getting it set up, and doing the dedication. Um, it was a great thing that they did, and I appreciate it, and.
That's it, thank you, Councilwoman Pat?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Pacheco? All right, I'll turn over to Manager Sullivan.
Thank you, um, with that logo plug, um, you, you'll see some hats going around, uh, Walker designed some, um, hats, he's hiding them, and so, if you look on your Facebook page, he's gonna give you some clues to try to do, uh, scavenger hunt. He's already done one, and we did two other hats today, so, they're, they're pretty cool, uh, different colors, we got black and white, they're trucker styled hats, uh, just, uh, plug for that, a little bit of advertising. Walker's doing a, I feel like he's doing a very good job on our social media promoting Holbrook, and I look forward to hopefully mo, a lot more from him, so. Um, with that too, uh, we have been, um, doing a veterans, um, honor our veterans thing, we're gonna, we're planning on doing, uh, pictures, how they served in the military, and we're gonna put some plaques, um, a lot like, uh, the school district does for their seniors. We're gonna do that in November.
Flags.
Oh, flags, so, um, last time I talked to Walker, we have twenty-three of those, if there's any veterans that are interested, go to our website, upload, um, type in your name, upload a picture, and, um, which military you, you served, and we'll get that going, so, that's going pretty well.
Real fast, we have a question in regard to that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, is it only local veterans, let's say somebody was born, raised here, and then they moved, but they were.
Right now, we, we, since it's the first time that we've done this, we're trying to just keep it local, um, because I didn't know how many were, we were gonna end up with, and I didn't wanna be, um, inundated. And so, so this first year, we're gonna try to keep it local, in the future, we may open it up to something.
Can, does the person who served have to provide that information, or can someone do it for them?
Yeah, yeah, if a family member, or, uh, even, I would say, somebody that's passed, has pictures and wants to honor them.
I mean, there's like, like Henry comes to mind, right, that does a lot of maintenance and yard work around.
Yeah.
I doubt he would put himself in.
Yeah. Is he? I, I'd be, I'd be open to, to that, I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is honor them as much as we can.
I would just recommend getting their permission, put their picture up. Take, take a picture of them, and you get, we can submit it, but just get their permission.
Um, the first avenue between, uh, East Hopee and Joy Nevin, that is just the first stage of that, um, after you do that, you will have to come back with a fog sill and a chip sill. So, the reason why we picked that road is, um, when they come do the fog sill and chip sill on the other roads that we have, we're gonna have them do that road too, so it'll be a, a true, um, visual of what, what the, this zipper will be able to do. Uh, you really wanna come back with a chip sill, uh, fast, s, pretty soon, um, but even then, if you, if we're able to just get a fog sill on it, that's gonna have some rejuvenating oils and properties in that road, and it should help make those la, long, last a lot longer. I think that road looks way better now than it, than it has even as it is, so I'm pretty excited with, with the future of, of that, uh, but we will have to do a lot more fog sills.
What's the difference between fog sill and chip sill?
So, fog sill, it's, it's, fog sill throws, uh, oil down, and it's a different type of oil, that'll, uh, rejuvenate the existing oils in the asphalt.
Okay.
The chip sill is another type of oil, and it's tackier, and you lay that over the top, and then that's what adheres the chips onto the road. So, a chip sill actually, uh, adds a whole nether layer onto that road versus just re, uh, rejuvenating oil, to try to help that road stay combined. Um, we are advertising a scarecrow tonk contest, so look out for that shortly, we are gonna have the scarecrows lined up in the median, but in Hunt Park, and so, we're gonna probably have prizes for, for second and third. Uh, Skylar Williams, uh, came up with that idea, and is, uh, trying to promote that, so, um, I wanted to.
When will that be?
It's gonna be, let me see if I have the flyer on there.
If you don't, you want me to run out?
Oh, yeah, we, uh, the registration was gonna be by October fifteenth, we're gonna set the scarecrows up, uh, October seventeenth, so.
And the community, like, creates a scarecrow, enters it, and then it's judged, and then they win?
Yeah, then we're gonna judge, we're gonna do, um, kind of like a campaign where, uh, if you, um, see it, like it on Facebook, and you vote for which scarecrow, so. Um, again, it's one of our first times doing it, so we'll try to fumble through it, uh, I think it'll be pretty cool. Um, with the weather, uh, floods coming in, I wanted to remind the public that we do have sandbags and a pile of sand behind the cemetery, so if you go in the, in, into the gate behind the Legion, and behind the cemetery, as soon as you go in that gate, there's a pile of sand and a box with sandbags. So, if anybody in the community needs that, um, you're welcome to those sandbags, to try to prep for it. Um, Reading Under the Stars is tomorrow from five to seven, there's gonna be a couple city employees, um, there, I, I'm sure it's gonna be weather permitting, since the, the rain is coming through, um. And the chip sill might get postponed now because of that rain too, so, uh, they don't wanna lay that chip sill and that oil unless it's above seventy degrees, or you won't get a good bind. So, if, so we're kinda playing it by ear, it's not canceled yet, but depending on that weather, how, how much it drops the temperature, we may have to postpone that a little bit, or into the spring, when the temperatures allow us. Um, we aerated and planted grass seed at Lizitski, the golf course, and that new field, so, I went to Lizitski and the golf course, there's already grass coming up on that, within the next, uh, probably next Wednesday, uh, we should be starting to see grass on that new field too, so. I'm pretty excited about that, the parks department's done a lot of that in-house, and so, uh, they're all excited, it's gonna be really nice to, to see a bunch of green out there, so, instead of what it was, weeds. Um, so, I, I wanted to give an update on that, looking forward to that, and, uh, guess that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, item number ten, submission of written petition for items not on the agenda.
There are none.
Item eleven, adjournment, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, seven oh nine, all right, we do have a work session following this, so we will give you a six-minute. Alright, we do have a work session following this, so we will give you a six-minute break and we'll start at seven fifteen.